A call to order, the Shawnee City Commission meeting, February 6, 2012. Call roll please.
Stevens. Sims.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Winteringer.
Smith.
Here.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be given by Reverend David Henry from Calvary Baptist Church, followed by the flag salute. All who wish to, please rise.
Let us pray. Gracious and kind, help me, Father. We're so grateful for the gift of life and all the good and perfect gift that you give to us each day. Father, we thank you for the leaders that you have assembled here, along with their staff and other support workers of this city of Shawnee. Father, we pray that you will give wisdom, direction, and strength for all the matters that will be considered tonight. And we pray for your continued gracious and kindness to all of us as we continue to live each day. We always remember those who serve in the armed forces and those who serve in medical, fire, and other services across this great city and state. We just pray that you will be with them and their families. We pray for their safety and their well-being. In Christ name we pray. Amen.
Attention, physician pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Reverend Henry. All right. Okay, item number one, consider approval of agenda. Motion to approve by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Collier.
Madam Mayor, if I may interject right here. Items number 14 and 16 were inadvertently left on the agenda. As you are well aware, we've had some changeover in the leadership of the union, and we are meeting with them this week. So, I'd like to ask the commissioners to defer that action until our next meeting.
Can we do that under this item?
Yes.
Okay.
I would amend my motion to approve the agenda exclusively of items 14 and 16. That will be deferred to the next meeting.
Motion amended by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
And seconded still by Vice Mayor Collier. Anything else? Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Shekares.
Thank you. Item number two, consider approval of consent agenda.
I move with adopter H.
Okay.
Second.
So, a motion by Commissioner Harrod to accept the consent agenda A through G, seconded by Commissioner Sims. Anything else? Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Thank you. To H.
Are we have, have we hired an architect or any ones that there specifications on this, or are we going to, what's the situation?
The RFQs are to hire an engineer or architect to take a look at the building and look at the material it's ripped out of and make a decision if any changes need to be made with the way. We've already kind of talked about some changes that we think need to be made that would help the water run into the drains a little bit more, but this would help us get a better line on specifications for.
Well, I thought I read that, and then I looked it back up on the agenda and it doesn't say that, so I didn't know. But if it's to, if it's to hire an engineer or an architect to have design and do the specifications and then go out for bids and I move with adopter H.
Okay. A motion to approve by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Shekares.
Thank you. Item number three, citizens' participation.
My name is Richard Finley. I'm a CPA, born and raised here in Shawnee. I have some handouts, if it pleases. My purpose for being here is to ask a couple of questions about the Shawnee Regional Sports Complex. It's really not my goal to criticize the report. I felt like there were some things in there which were assumptions were maybe questionable, such as the fact that 100% of the gasoline to get to and from these events y'all are gonna have is assumed to have been bought in Shawnee. But beside that fact, in the handout that you have, you will find, since this is your report, I presume that you all are all familiar with it. On the fourth page of this report, I've cross-referenced everything on the first three pages to the page number in the report. So, this is your data that I'm dealing with. You'll see four items on the fourth page where I've, did I give you one of these? I'm sorry.
Do you have extra?
Yes, I did. I apologize. You'll see four items where my initials are there, and those are assumptions that I plugged in. Number one is the interest rate that you're gonna pay on the bonds. I've used 2%. I'm given to understand that a recent GO bond was priced closer to 4%, so the debt service is actually gonna be higher than what I've set forth. I've used a 20-year debt service term. I've assumed that you all have 17 baseball teams coming from out-of-town teams, and I've assumed that 100% of those are gonna spend the night here in Shawnee. I don't think that's true, but that puts things in the most favorable light to your presentation. Again, on the soccer, you presume that 69 teams are gonna travel from out of town, and I've assumed that 100% of those are gonna stay here in town. Back to the first page, and using your assumptions and the underlying assumptions that were set forth by the economists from Oklahoma State, I have to kind of break things down in a pretty simple manner. So, what I've done is I've built a little spreadsheet, and I've used your numbers, and by the time I crack through these numbers and the number of guests that you say are coming and the number of participants per player that you say are coming and the number of events that you say are coming, that you're gonna run an annual cash deficit of $1,361,000 to $1,427,000. Now, that difference between those two numbers is because the economist from OSU presented a range in one section of his program. But again, this is your information, and so I presume that you're familiar with that. As you walk through the detail of this spreadsheet, you'll find that these are precisely the numbers that you all have used in your economic study. If you apply some tests of reasonableness and you use the $4 million economic impact that you all are so proud we're gonna say, that we're gonna have, and apply a 3% sales tax rate to that, that's a whopping $120,000 a year. I contend that you're gonna run a million, over a million dollars short, and my question to Mr. Sims, since he's the one that's all high on this project, is where's the other million dollars gonna come from?
You can't answer it.
Why don't you study them, and maybe you can get back with me or get it in the paper before the election? We can maybe have a little public debate with some real numbers that are your numbers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jack Barrett. I live at 1425 East Bradley. I too have born and raised here in Shawnee, and I'd like to thank each and every one of you and city staff for their hard work and dedication on this, on these bond issues, in particular, the Family Activities Park. And I think that if each one of us will look closely in our hearts and look to the future, I think that great things are in store for our city, and if each one of us gives a little bit, we'll gain much, much more. And just like one of the, at the forum here last week, I'd call into question some of those numbers and math, and I would say that we're gonna all benefit and not run a deficit. I think that it will pay for itself, and we'll all end up in a better place. On another note, in 2006, there at Elman Bradley Street, excuse me, Elman Bradley Street, I asked the city to install some stop signs. The city did so. The Traffic Commission voted. Admittedly, the city staff was against it because stop signs, quote, "are not speed control devices." My issue was that people, for I don't know how long, certainly since I was a teenager, have used Bradley Street as a high-speed bypass to the rough street and school zone on Independence in front of Sequoia, and even some of our mayor and commissioners might even travel that street occasionally. But I asked that those stop signs be put in to put some curb on the speeding that the hundreds of cars a day, not everyone speeds, but hundreds of cars a day go by there, and the vast majority of them are going over 30 miles an hour, sometimes up to 50 and 60 miles an hour. The stop signs were put in in 2006. Contrary to the traffic, some members of the Traffic Commission's assertions that I had it put in to benefit my development there on the corner, I have objection with that, considering that I didn't buy the property until two years later. The reason I wanted those stop signs there was to protect my life, the lives of my wife and children and everyone else on that street from people that drive too fast. Much to my disappointment here, a few weeks back, those stop signs were removed, and apparently the Traffic Commission went looking for unnecessary stop signs. I find that utterly ridiculous, given the fact that there are branches and trees covering stop signs in this town, there are street signs with peeling, lettering on it, and I certainly would imagine that their time would be better spent looking for those things. I would ask that the Commission consider, when it comes before them, in the time, in the future, I will be appearing for the Traffic Commission to see what I can get done about that, because the people that like the stop sign there live on Bradley Street. The people that don't like it use it as a high-speed bypass. So, I would ask that when it comes before the Traffic Commission and City Commission, that you look at the true facts, that there are hundreds of cars a day, speed is a problem there. It's not to benefit me personally, it's for the safety of the community and those in that neighborhood, and hopefully we can get something done there to slow people down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Herschel Ring. I've lived here probably 43 years. I live at 1417 East Bradley. I too liked the stop sign that was there, but that's not what I'm hearing about today. I have no confidence in Police Chief Russell France. I want to know who pleases the police. I have two court hearing transcripts that prove two Shawnee police officers, Casey Vague and James Wood, committed what the judge called "the filing of a fraudulent deceiving police report." Not just one hearing, but two. I filed a police report about the officer's testimony. Not one thing has been done about this. Why would we want a chief police that wants officers like this? I think we as Shawnee citizens deserve better. They should be held accountable to the law and higher standards. Why should we want those who've been found guilty of fraud and deception in court? Why are they still patrolling? And isn't this a conflict of interest that City Councilmember Pam Stevens to be Officer Wood's personal attorney? Is that why nothing is being done about this? A cop has committed fraud? Fraud is a crime. Chief France and his detective Gibson are protecting their friends. The city manager didn't return my calls about this after months of leaving messages. Then even after he finally talked to me about this, he hasn't done anything about it. And why hasn't the city replaced Jeff Rogers' handicap vehicle? A man who was gunned down while serving in the line of duty. So, we cover up for the fraudulent cops, the shaft officers who gave his body and almost his life. Our system is broke, and it needs new people with better judgment. We need a new chief and a new city manager. If the city manager and police chief are willing to protect fraudulent cops, then they all need to be removed. I'm just a citizen here. I have no confidence in the city manager or chief police. It appears to me they can't even tell right from wrong. Officer Tom Pringle would make a better police chief, in my opinion. If I was able to vote for a chief of police, it would be someone that held the officers to a higher standard than the ones found filing fraudulent and deceiving police reports against our citizens. Months ago, I filed another police report about these two officers threatening my life. I would like to know the outcome of this investigation. When I told the city manager of this report, he laughed at me on the phone. I find this very unprofessional. Don't the citizens deserve better? All of these men buy their food, clothes, cars, and homes with our hard-earned money, our tax money. Shouldn't they do their job, which is to serve and protect, not fraud and deceive us? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Item number four, presentation by Aid Bailey of audited financial statements of the city of Shawnee and related authorities for the fiscal year 2010-2011.
Mayor Peterson and city commissioners, I'm Carolyn Leavings with Aid Bailey. I'm here to present the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2011. You should have three deliverables which were sent to you with the packet. First is the basic financial statements audit, which is the large 66-page audit, these basic financial statements. The second is the federal awards programs audit in accordance with OMB Circular A133, which is the single audit, which covers all the federal funding. And the third is the required communication under auditing standards to the board. On the financial statement audit, we did express an unqualified opinion, which is a clean opinion. It was delivered to the state of Oklahoma by the state deadline, December 31st. It was submitted to the federal government just this week, when the deadline is March 31st, so we made that deadline also. This year, there were no prior period adjustments, which would be corrections to previously issued audits. There were none of those this year. The financial results for 2001 are summarized in the management's discussion and analysis, which begins on page seven of the large audit report. Some of those high points on that discussion, they're all covered in the audited financial statements, but the management's discussion and analysis kind of gives a more common sense explanation of everything. Total net assets for the city increased by 7.2 million. The unrestricted net assets were only 1 million. The governmental funds, which excludes the municipal and airport authorities, increased by 223,000 due to revenues and transfers which exceeded expenditures. The enterprise funds, which are the municipal and the airport authorities, fund equity increased by 5 million. On the financial statement findings, there were no material weaknesses noted this year. If you remember, in the prior year, there were two last year, but there were none this year. There was one significant deficiency over controls, over capital assets last year. I'm sorry, it was a repeat finding from last year, but there were improvements from last year to this year. And would note that those findings are listed in the single audit report and in the internal control letter. On the single audit, four major programs were audited, the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, another part of the CDBG, which was the ERA funding, which is the stimulus program from the federal government, the Airport Development Grant, and the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Grant. There were three current year findings on CDBG program revenue, on the revolving loan fund, support for the draw requests or reconciliations. The airport grant was on filing the required reports, and management is currently in process of remitting all of those findings. The letter which you received is one of the required communications from Aid Bailey to the City Commission. We're required to send those to all of those that govern the city. It lists one significant estimate, which is the workers' compensation claims liability. And there was one uncorrected adjustment, which was immaterial to the financial statements, and that was listed on the last page of those financial statements. We had no disagreements, difficulties, or consultations with other auditors that were noted. We'd like to express our thanks to the city manager and the finance director and the finance department. We received excellent help from all of them while we were doing our audit, and also thanks to Crawford and Associates who compiled the financial statements. And lastly, thanks to the mayor and the members of the city commission. We're pleased to present this audit to you.
Thank you.
If there are any questions.
Can you take a look at the unfunded liability on our retirement? I was trying to find it here in my notes and couldn't, but I noticed that it increased again this year. Is that correct?
I don't remember what it was last year. It's somewhere on page 49, 50, 51. I think it comes up to where you're 80% funded on the pension.
What page does it say?
51 of the report.
Is that out of, is that pretty normal, or is that out of proportion? We've been accused of it being way out of proportion, that's why I'm asking.
I've seen worse. I have, 80% is usually pretty good. Most of the pension plans in the state of Oklahoma are pretty seriously underfunded.
So, you're saying 90% is adequate?
Well, you know, it's based on the actuary reports, so it's a big estimate there too, so.
So, you just take the Macaron report and you said?
Yes.
I was gonna ask, did you use the actuarial report, or did you compute something on your own?
No, we used the actuary report.
The actuary report is based on January, so the actuary they were used was January 2011.
2011.
Yeah, 2011.
Okay.
Okay.
I just ask them because we've been accused of having an illness debt there, and I was wondering, I can see if that's clarification, if that was good, bad, or what our situation was on it.
When they say we're 80% funded, is there any little side notes or footnotes to that? If contingent A happens, that may change, or what's that based on? What does 80% sound?
Well, the total assets that are in your plan, the actuary has estimated liability at 30.8 million. You have 24.7 million in assets, so that the balance of that, if everything should come due, is the difference in that liability.
And that was based on market values, is January 1, 2011?
Yes.
So, it's a year old.
A year old. Okay, thank you.
So, one of the reasons that might be changed is because of market standing.
Yes, sir.
Another liability that was mentioned in here, and I think in a letter to the editor, was uncompensated absences and how we account for those, how large that is and what we account for annually.
Those are included on the financial statements, starting on page 17, the statement of net assets, those are included in the liability. It's included in the accounts payable and accrued expenses.
Right.
Now, it is not included, it's not included on the fund level, financial statements, which start on page 19, I believe. It's not included in the fund level statements, but when you get to the full accrual on the government-wide level is where we record those on the financial statements.
And it, okay.
Mayor, if I could say something. Whenever we discuss fund balance in a commission meeting or anywhere, we always will say we have $1.7 million in fund balance. We have already compensated for the uncompensated absence. When the article, they used the 630, 2010 financial, we had a fund balance at the fund level of $4 million. We backed out the uncompensated absence. We booked those in our financials in-house 100%, so they are totally 100% compensated for.
Okay, and we changed that about three years ago?
2009.
Okay, okay. So, we are?
We earmark it.
Fully accounting for that?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
We earmark it. When our financial said we had $4 million, we back it out, because we know that if we had a natural disaster or something, we would have to take it out.
That's right. Yeah, we've had a lot of conversation about that.
And it is earmarked 100%.
Okay. Well, what about workers' comp? That's the other item. I think that was in the letter on the front page, too, about a liability, a future liability.
That liability is also shown on the statement of net assets. It's not at the fund level, but it is on the government-wide statement of net assets.
Okay.
It's shown as long-term debt on there.
Right. But with no knowledge about what that'll be, is what you're saying? It's a long-term liability that you don't see a fund for?
Right, it's not in the fund level statements, right.
Okay, okay. And annually, we budget for that?
We budget about $750,000 per year. And basically, by Oklahoma's law and the Constitution, we can actually levy any judgments against the city on property taxes, but at this time, we fund it through a general fund. We have a separate fund that's for workman's comp, and I charge every department, and we moved in X amount of dollars, the 736 plus interest, into workman's comp fund. We fund that, we self-fund it 100%.
But we're funding the expenses as they come up? We're not funding a future liability also, as in having a fund balance, for lack of a better word, in the workers' comp account?
That is correct.
Is that a?
There's a little bit of fund balance in it, not a whole lot.
Okay, okay. So, you're just pointing out that there is a future liability, or there could be a future liability there?
Yes, that's also actuarially determined.
Okay. All right. All right, anything else? Yes, no? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number five, presentation of annual report and budget for the Shawnee Convention and Visitor Bureau by Gordana Rowell, Director.
Hello.
Hello.
Hopefully, this will
Hopefully, this will be short and sweet. I trust that you've had a chance to go through the annual report.
Yeah, is there anything new in here that you just gave us?
And what I gave you is actually a lot of our materials. The annual report is in there, but some of our materials, you've received some of those by mail, but because we're a marketing organization and projecting an image is what we do, I wanted you to see what everything looks like, again. And I think some of you have probably seen a lot of that, but just so you have it. And like I said, I'm sure you had time to go through the annual report. If you were reading an audit, you may not have gotten to that. But to hit the high points, as you know, our mission is to plan, encourage, foster, and develop programs to increase tourism and visitors, as well as attract conferences, events, and youth championships to the greater Shawnee area. And that is what we have been busy doing this last year. Our occupancy is up four percent from last year. We're at sixty-three-eight is where we ended the year. December's typically a little bit slower month. January will start picking up a little bit, and this month, we should, February, we should have a real good month. We had an event this last weekend that was huge for our properties. It was a new event that we brought in, so I think we're just gonna continue to see that go up. We're on the rebound in the industry. And ADR, which is average daily rate, is at five percent over last year, eight percent since two thousand and nine. That's the, go ahead.
But you might mention that same event last year, because of the bad weather, was just canceled.
Non-existent.
Non-existent, because at the same time, we have the storm, so this is actually the first year this event's been back to Shawnee, probably.
You mean this one, this weekend, Central District? Livestock show? Okay.
No, it's been in Stillwater.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And it increased about twenty-five percent. They're averaging seven or eight hundred attendees in other places, and I think we had about twelve hundred was the report I received on that. So, yeah, the weather, the weather helps us and hurts us, because even though the weather is real detrimental sometimes to some of our event structure, when it's really bad, it's still really good for our hotels, because unfortunately, when people don't have power, all these O G and E people, and they're trying to keep the hotels up, and they're still staying there. You leave your home and go get a hotel, so. Anyway, the average daily rate is the average across all of our properties, so that doesn't stand for just one. But that's up, it's about sixty-six dollars, and the real important number is the RevPAR. And that is, that's how our hotels basically make their profit, and that's up nine percent for our lodging partners, so that's important. They've had some belt-tightening years, and so we're glad to see them feeling a little bit of recovery. We subscribe to Smith Travel Research, it's called the Star Report, and it's pretty much kind of what the hotels live by. They asked us to do that years ago, and we've been doing that for a number of years, and it's the most accurate data that's available for us to gauge our occupancy. Advertising, publications, a lot of that's in your packet. Basically, the same thing we've been doing from the standpoint of visitor guides, rack cards, antique brochures, wall calendars, coupon books. And then, last year for this year, we actually took over and sold the city map, that's in production. And that's a new publication for twenty-twelve for us, and it'll kind of match the rest of our things. Advertising, go ahead.
Is that why advertising is up? Is that where that is?
Advertising.
Is that, I mean, like, in your budget, if you're producing the map, is that considered advertising?
No, that's considered a publication. And in two thousand, when I gave you the budget embedded in the report, typically, I give you that separately, but it shows eleven and twelve side by side. The, at the top, where you have the publications, it's a wash. It's visitor guide and publications, and that's typically a wash. We sell advertising for those pieces, and it pays for it. In twenty-twelve, we've actually budgeted a loss, because we'd like to add one or two publications that are not advertising-supported. It would be completely separate pieces. So, the other, the actual advertising section is where we are doing placement in things like your state vacation guide, Frontier Country Vacation Guide. We do a mix of our, what we call our leisure travel market. Those are the general visitors that are coming to see family, they're coming for reunions and weddings, they may be coming specifically for some events. Then we do targeted placement advertising as well, for seasons, for special, you know, exhibits, or a number of different events going on, and those are targeted to leisures. And then we have also some advertising that's placed specifically for our meetings and events market. A lot of that falls under our sales and recruitment, but there is a little bit of advertising placement there. And then, media relations, I'm gonna kind of intertwine, and at the end of the report, we have some of the twenty-twelve things that we're doing different or more of. So, on that note, that's one of our increased programs. We kind of started that in the fall, kicked some of those things off in the fall, but it's an increased media public relations activity, targeting some of our specific events that will have the ability, over the course of a number of years, to really get the attention as some of our news media, television in particular. Television's real hard, because even though we have great stories, at the last minute, sometimes there's a great tornado that's more interesting. So, that's just something we have to work with. But getting the word out there year after year keeps us in front of them as a community and as events, so we're working on that. And then, in, at the end of this year, as we produce all the new publications, one of the things we're starting to work on around April or May is a complete overhaul. We have had a little bit different look and feel over the last, you know, year to year, but we've tried to maintain some consistency also with our website, so everything's complimentary. And in twenty thirteen, most of the look and feel of that will kind of take a new design is the objective, so.
So the upgrade of the website, and then the publications, will not, they're not planned for twenty-twelve, that's planned for twenty-thirteen?
Well, it's, it's twenty thirteen as far as design, but that, some of that will start happening. We start working on our publications in July. So, some of them aren't out until November, December, January. So the web is usually the first thing that rolls, because that's a longer term, a bigger project. So that will probably start happening, hopefully, by the time we get through rodeo in August, we'll start working on kind of getting that changed over, and then that will roll into all of the look and feel of our publications, is the goal. Then, meeting and recruitment, I've listed a little bit of information about that. We have more extensive information in the reports that come out at each of our meetings. Kenley does her sales report, but we've focused real heavy on the RV market over the last few years. We have ignored the other markets, but that has been a heavier focus and emphasis, and I think we've talked about that somehow, we can do things with RVs while other events are going on, even if our hotels are near capacity. That doesn't always mean it's because of an expo event. So that was an area we felt like we could kind of bring up a notch, and over the last three years, that's really paid off. The rallies have tripled since that program started, and I put some of those numbers in there. Those are based on the data from the expo, and that's, when I say they've tripled, that is based on somebody paying for an RV slip rental night for a rally. That doesn't include the leisure traffic that comes in, because we do have a number of rallies, or rigs that just stop in, that doesn't include event traffic. For instance, Triangle, or a number, Central District, or some of those events going on that bring in in rent spots. That is specific to RV rallies. And if you take the dollars we spent in two thousand and ten, and what the expo took in just on slips for rallies, it's one to seven in direct revenues, but a more realistic picture would be the one to fifteen, and that's what we spent over a three-year period. And I think we're at a real good place as far as the number of rallies. They are just ecstatic about the upgrades. I got off the phone again with another rally coming this spring, and I know some of them will have to maneuver a few obstacles, but they are just really excited. That's like their main selling point on everybody coming back to their rally in Shawnee. So, we definitely appreciate that. They've got their AMP upgrades and their new parking lot, and they're just pumped. So, in twenty-twelve, our focus is shifting a little to the meetings and conference market. We will still have a presence with our rallies, but more of a, more of just a continuity as far as a presence, keeping them happy, keeping them coming, but putting a little bit more money into the meetings and conference market, just to nurture that side a little bit.
And how, how many years does it take to finally grow that part of the business some, too? I mean, that's not an immediate go-to-a?
No.
Show and book them, I mean, that doesn't happen. How far out do they book? Two to three years?
It depends on the conference. And we could, there are conferences that, you know, there are smaller conferences we could bid this year to have in twenty thirteen. There are some that you're bidding two or three years out. Those are typically a lot larger ones. But, you know, most of them, I think in a couple of years, you'll start to see the return. Part of it's not just going to these shows and going and making the contacts, it's making them over and over again. So they remember, and the relationship is built.
I mean, you have to go a number of times before.
Mm-hmm. The relationships being built, and they're starting to actually believe this bill, you know, one of the things that happened in our RV market, and we kind of took a chance, it was right after the surcharge had been changed, and we were being encouraged to attend a rally in Kentucky. And I just thought, man, that's a long way, that's a plane ticket. For us at the time, it seemed like a lot of money to spend, and it was a very small conference, less than a hundred people, but that has, that yielded great returns. And we still, we try to go at least every other year and make those contacts, because they were talking amongst themselves when they saw Shawnee. They were like, oh, I went there with that rally, and then they started talking about what had changed in the last ten years, and so just having that presence, sometimes they help sell us, for us, so. So that's kind of the sales and recruitment update. Event support, that's listed in here. I think most of you are aware of what we do there, and I think in twenty-eleven, we spent, it looks like around twenty-seven thousand in direct event support dollars went out. Some of that is budgeted, as far as we know upfront, that we have committed during the bid process, if, you know, this event comes for twenty-five hundred, or five hundred, or whatever. Some of it's not. So, in twenty-twelve, you'll see where we budgeted thirty-eight thousand. We may or may not spend all that. It's contingent upon, you know, a portion of that's contingent upon the right events and what we need, and we don't just have a magic number. It's based on the room nights they're going to yield, whether it's a one-year, or we have multi-year options. A lot of it's based on the recommendation from the expo or the other locations it affects, so, to give you kind of some information there.
And does that reduce cost to them, or do you actually give them a refund of some kind, or you just waive a fee for something they would pay for when they come in?
It does.
Is all of the above?
It depends, all of the above. It, sometimes, in some of our event conditions, it's actually marketing and advertising dollars for some of our events, like the Quilt Festival, or futuristically, more towards the fly-in and some of those. It is because it's directly spent to help them with their paid advertising needs or production of promotional materials. But events like the State Four-H Horse Show, for instance, they have a price tag of twenty-five hundred dollars. They don't come unless you write them a check for twenty-five hundred dollars. That's how it works. It reduces their expense, so they don't have to go out and beat the door for sponsors, and we don't have to have them. They can go somewhere else. But they love us, they're a great event, they do have an impact, they do stay in our hotels, so it's a little bit of everything. And in some events, we can't compete with, so. Some communities, in general, we've been very competitive in this market, but we have had a few events that have come up over the years where there's been somebody that just wanted them really bad, that's been willing to cut, you know, that fifteen, twenty thousand dollar check. And there's just not really, it'd take a lot of impact to justify that kind of expenditure.
Are they worth it?
Yeah.
For you to spend your money?
And in our opinion, they weren't. So, based on what we were running as far as numbers, hotel nights, and what they would actually be able to generate, it wasn't worth the cost, so. I told you, I embedded the budget in there. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer those. Our, the awards this year that we received, we did get a couple of awards for the mobile website. I have a love-hate relationship with that. I love mobile websites, because it takes less time to load. I hate them, because I feel like you have to, everybody's mobile website is very condensed, and so that's a little stressful. I realized you can't easily access the annual report on the mobile website, which, not that necessarily somebody would want to, but if they did, there are just some things that you can't do. But it's designed for our travelers that are looking for that restaurant, or looking for that attraction, and they can log on there real quick and easy and get a map and a phone number, and the basic things they need, so. The, I think I covered most of the other stuff as far as our twenty-twelve plans. Facebook, Twitter, I know enough to be dangerous. Thank goodness, I have some staff that knows more than that. We do have an active Facebook site, we just went through a little change there, so we're kind of doing a rebuild, but that's going well. We talked about the website. I did, on the last page, try to include an update on the visitor center. I know a lot of conversations been had over that, from the, the simple questions to the detail questions. I did my best answer as much as I can. The big, simple things are, we're getting really close to land payoff, and this year, the end of the year during planning, is when we would like to kind of roll out the actual construction plan, and how we would look at funding that, hoping that the Brian interchange and all those questions hopefully have been answered by then, because that was one thing we were looking at. We were encouraged to wait until the city and state and all those different details have been worked out. We have a lot of different funding options and a lot of interest to help us with that, but once again, cart before the horse, so hopefully by this fall, we'll be able to answer some of those questions. As far as logistics of what it will be and what it will look like, I've included those renderings, that's how far we've gotten. Would love to see it open seven days a week. Would love to see it open as decent of hours as possible, as is reasonably safe and functional. Intent is to form a docent program, much like what the state uses at the state centers, and the private centers also use those. Great restrooms, lots of literature, hopefully a first-class facility that people can say Shawnee's really done it right. So, that's the overall plan.
Do you see funding needs changing when the visitor center is up and going?
Funding needs, as far as our funding?
Being able to support the center?
I personally don't, because I think the reinvestment of, I think that's a twofold approach. It depends on if you're looking at taking out, if we have a big loan to pay off, which was not ever the intent, and that was part of the reason we wanted to pay the land and then go to the funding part of the construction. Because right now, if you're making payments on the property, and you don't have those payments, that's gonna wash some of your operations costs.
Yeah.
Which we have factored, and I don't have those numbers in front of me. So, really, you're not looking at having to hire a big staff, you have it for your front-end part of it, that's part of your docent program, and I don't think it would, from the numbers we've run, we don't feel that way, no.
Okay.
No, I'm sure I could, that could be challenged, and we can do more research on that, but I don't feel like, from what the research we have done, that that's gonna be a problem. Anything else?
Not for me.
On the estimate on the building, was that the architect's estimate, or is that just somebody's out of the sky?
The building cost?
Yes.
That was, that was a year ago, John Patterson's estimate, and that is, that was his estimate, but we also have estimates that are very similar, based on the cost of the state centers, as well as, we've seen a lot of the detail work off of like Midwest City ten, fifteen years ago. Of course, you know, a big chunk of that, y'all are real familiar with that, a big chunk of that's parking lot. So, you gotta put in a big parking lot to park cars, and to park trucks and trailers, and for RVs to be able to pull through, and to service the visitors we have. And so that's, that's a pretty nice chunk of change, obviously, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
We have the pictures of that, so.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Item number six, reconvene public hearing in consideration of an ordinance annexing property located northwest of the intersection of MacArthur Street and Acme Road, just east of Highway one seventy-seven, applicant Kickapoo Tribe of Oklahoma, continued from the December nineteenth, twenty-eleven meeting, at the request of the applicant. at the request of the applicant and the January 17th, 2012 meeting for additional documents. So we are still in a public hearing? Does anyone wish to speak to this? Do we have a staff update?
The attorney for the tribe and I are planning to meet on Wednesday right after lunch. And I believe we'll be able to finish ironing out the memorandum of understanding and some, we have a few clauses left in that. We need to just, we're not in any disagreement. We're just crafting language at this point. With the staff's recommendation that since there was nothing else tonight, that you go ahead and close the public hearing. But then postpone consideration of the ordinance, two more weeks and we think we'll have it ready for you. And not only, and it will also have been reviewed and approved by the tribe by that time. We're not, I don't want this to indicate that we're disagreeing and struggling from that regard. There are just a lot of things to consider.
Does anyone wish to speak? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any motion to defer one more time?
Our witness closed the public hearing.
But we had closed the public hearing.
I did, I did.
So we're postponing it for action and when you'll consider the ordinance with the plan of services and memorandum of understanding.
I make the motion that we defer for the next meeting.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Smith and a second by Commissioner Sims to defer to the next meeting for the memorandum of understanding and any other documents, I guess. All right, call roll, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Mission carries.
Thank you. Item seven, public hearing in consideration of a conditional use permit in A1 zoning for property located at 16209 C Patterson Road. Case P04-12, applicant Lance and Destiny Walker. I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. What's your pleasure? Have any questions?
Well, I'm going to condition order on that.
That one's, the other one was four, thank you.
It was just two commission, two conditions, Commissioner. They were that the home meet all required setbacks. So just to clarify, there were no variances granted in association with the conditional use permit. And number two was that the home be substantially similar to the photograph that was provided by the applicants. And that showed a 1995 unit. And so the condition, we had a condition that the, that that unit be placed or that a unit in newer or better condition be placed in substitution.
I'd move to accept the conditional use permit with the two conditions that's given by the staff.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Herod.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Any other questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Do you want to read?
No, we have one.
An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of City of Shawnee, Oklahoma to wit. Attractive land described as beginning at a point 1,590 feet south and 495 feet east of the northwest corner of the northwest quarter of Section 22, Township 10 North, range 2 east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma. Thence north, 531.2 feet, thence east, 205 feet, thence south, 531.2 feet, thence west, 205 feet to the point of the beginning according to the reported plat there. We're zoning said property from A1 agricultural to A1P agricultural with a conditional use permit and ending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
Now call roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Mission carries.
Thank you. Item number eight, consideration of approval of the Greystone Edition Preliminary and Final Plats located north of Highland Street on the east side of Cleveland Street. Case S02-12 and S03-12, applicant absentee Shawnee Housing Authority. This is just a preliminary and final plat. Any questions? Comments?
I'd move with, approve the Greystone Edition Primary and Final Plat with the four conditions that's listed by the staff.
Okay.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Herod and a second by Commissioner Sims to approve the preliminary and final plats contingent on the conditions. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Mission carries.
Thank you. Item number nine, consideration of approval of the Austin and Austin Preliminary Plat located in the 3,800 block of North Harrison Street on the west side. Case number S04-12, applicant Landys Engineering LLC. What's your pleasure?
Is there, oh, and there's some conditions on that?
Yeah, three, I think.
Three.
Yes, sir. There were three conditions that staff and the planning commission concurred with staff recommendations. Pretty standard conditions. But it relates to the private street that is proposed to access the commercial lots. And then relates to infrastructure plans being approved by the city engineer. And we'll have those plans in place when the applicant submits for final plat in the next few weeks.
Now that, that's on the street, saying that the city will inspect that and everything. So if we have to or has to take it over then, it comes up to our specifications.
And that was the reasoning for the condition is that basically the condition will, it reads is that the, the private street be built to city standards. And so that if there is ever a maintenance issue in the future, should a future commission wish to take over maintenance responsibilities, that it would be built to city standards.
And is that because of the frontage or the lack thereof of two of the lots?
The applicant.
It's hard to understand with this, for me, for this drawing that we have here.
Right, I know there's a lot going on on that drawing. I think it's significantly clearer on the final plat when you can simply just see the lot lines. But, and in fact, the applicant made a last-minute alteration to the plan. And originally, there were two lots that were, that did not front upon dedicated public street, which is, which is a violation of city code. And so the staff report discusses that. But in between the time of issuance of the staff report before the public hearing, before the planning commission, there were some changes that were made. And so they've simply affixed those lots that were landlocked to other lots that do front upon Harrison Street. So as configured now, all of the lots do meet city standards and there are no variances requested.
So the plat that we have in here was the corrected version. It doesn't necessarily go with the language.
That's correct, yes, ma'am. The, I believe it's on page 164 of your packet, on your digital packet.
Yeah, okay.
Or 165, yeah.
That makes a little more sense, too. Okay.
What's the zoning on this program?
The zoning is C3 commercial. So that would allow a wide variety of commercial enterprises.
On all these properties?
I'd move with and accept the Austin Offen primary preliminary plat plan or location, plat location.
With the conditions?
With the conditions listed by staff.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Herod.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Sims. Did you get all that, fellas? Okay, all right. Any other comments, questions? Call roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Mission carries.
Thank you. Item number 10, consider bids. A Harrison Street Planter Project COS-PW-11-06, open?
This, this item would be the opening of the Harrison Street Planter Project. But we're going to recommend that the bids be rejected and the bids not opened because there has been a kind of a snafu in scheduling. We haven't officially gotten ODOT's letter of approval to advertise the project. So they're requesting us to forego the bid opening. We did have to make one minor change to the plans to indicate a note on the, on the plan sheets to indicate that the project's within four miles of the regional airport. And as such, the FAA may be required to be notified because of the project. It's a federal requirement, even though common sense, it doesn't have anything to do with the project because the highest thing we're putting up is about three feet and it's, so. But that's ODOT's request and since they're funding, you know, 80% of the grant, we would like to be in good graces with them. So we're sorry that we rushed the advertising, but we just got to take a step backwards and do it until we get there later.
So you have not opened the bids?
No, I haven't, their, the city clerk has them. I didn't want to open them because I didn't want the bidders to know what the other ones bid. So we'll just go ahead and return it to them.
Okay.
So that'd be subject to a rebid, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we're going to rebid it. And then I think the fair thing to do, the contractors that have purchased the plans, we would just forego charging them the second time. Okay.
We need a motion on that?
Need a motion to reject and return with that opening.
I'll move, second.
A motion by Commissioner Herod, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Mission carries.
Thank you. 10B Community Center Fire Suppression System Award.
After opening the bids at the last meeting, there was about $30,000 difference between each, each one of them. And we kind of went over those bids. I called the bidders and talked to them. Each one of these bidders did meet at the location. They all understand what is to be done. So what staff is recommending, that we go ahead and award this to express fire protection for the amount of $48,700.
Okay. Any questions?
And that was the low bid?
That was the low bid, yes.
Yes. Move to.
That was a motion?
Except, the abstract recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Mission carries.
Thank you. Item number 11, new business.
Madam Mayor, I'm not aware of any new business this evening.
Wow, 12 administrative reports.
There are two this evening. First, we'll have Justin come up and talk about some brochures that we're putting out to inform our citizens about Tuesday's election.
Just wanted to provide the commission an update. Hopefully, you've all seen the city website. And if you do get inquiries from the public, you've been referring folks there that has all the factual information about the various propositions and associated fiscal impacts and sample ballots and just really everything that we have available is been made available to the public on that website. In addition, we did a notice and utility bills that references that website. And also just notes a brief project description and the funds that are requested. We also did a brochure that you have a copy of, an informational brochure that takes the factual information on, that included in the utility bills and adds some of the renderings that we've had done on the various projects, so. And that item would be, is going to be included in both the News Star and the Countywide. So hopefully between that outreach and the newspaper, of course, all the cover, all the press coverage and the utility bills and in addition to our website, hopefully everybody knows to go to, to go vote on February 14th.
So this is basically information from the website, but you put it in a different form to deliver, maybe for those who don't.
Mm-hmm, that's correct, yes, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just wanted to update the commission and next time we meet, it will all be over. Thank you.
Someone who's been to a lot of meetings also, yeah.
Madam Mayor, one more administrative report tonight by the United Fire Chief Judicial. Assistance to firefighter grant.
Good evening, excuse me. Just wanted to take a few minutes to make you aware of a grant opportunity that's currently available to us. It's for hiring more firefighters. It's a FEMA grant. Basically, it's called SAFER, which stands for Staffing or Adequate Fire Emergency Response. It's a grant, it's a federal grant, it's available direct to municipalities or communities, excuse me, to hire more firefighters. The intent of the grant is to get more communities in compliance with NFPA 1710, which basically states that a community of our size that uses an aerial apparatus like we do should be able to put 15 firefighters on the fire ground of a normal fire, a normal structure fire, 2,000 square feet structure fire, 15 on the fire ground within the first eight minutes, 90% of the time. So that's a goal that they have set forth with this grant that fits right in line with what we're trying to do. We currently respond with 11 most of the time. That's our minimum manning. And that's what we respond with probably close to 90% of the time. So it's what the, it's a two-year period of performance on the grant. They've changed that this year. In the past, it's been, there's been a cost share for the community. There currently is none. It's a two-year period of performance. They pay, what they will do is reimburse you for both, both years. We would pay, if we hired, say, additional three firefighters, one per shift, that we would pay their salaries and quarterly be reimbursed for the first two years. After that, then we would be on our own. But they, but there's no, in the past, there's been a third-year requirement on the municipality to retain that firefighter. And they've removed that requirement this year. And just briefly, some ideas of what we've, where we are right now with, with staffing. We looked at last year, last, the last calendar year, one more firefighter per shift or three firefighters would have saved us roughly 6,500 hours of overtime. And that's roughly translates to around $130,000 of overtime that would, we could have saved if we had three more firefighters. And the cost to hire three would be about $160,000. So we're about $30,000 off of that. And the potential benefit from this grant is around $330,000 for two years. If we were to hire, if we were to get awarded for three firefighters, that's around $330,000 grant award that is possible to us. This last year is the first year in Oklahoma that I've seen communities of our size get awarded. Owasso and Duncan both received awards this year. In the past, it's either been the bigger communities like Oklahoma City, Tulsa, or the smaller communities. So I just wanted to make y'all aware of that. And our intent, what we'd like to do is pursue that this year. My hope is to maybe come back in the next meeting and ask permission to pursue the grant this year.
What's the deadline?
It's actually February 24th this year.
Have you applied for this before?
We did one time and we didn't, we didn't receive an award. That was, I believe, two years ago.
Can you, how long will it take you to pull together that?
It won't take long. I've actually been, been doing some research. I've talked with Duncan and Owasso and kind of picked their brains a little bit and we have, I still have what we submitted the last time and have some, have some stuff that has, it wouldn't take us long to put one together.
But if the deadline's the 24th, then I have to act on it in our next meeting.
Right. My plan was to, was to kind of spend some time getting ready and in hopes that, in hopes that we can go for, so to have it prepared.
You think you're going to ask for three? Should you do your review and come back and ask us?
Yes.
To do so that you can get one per shift?
We felt like that's probably the most sustainable thing to do is, and that would make a substantial impact on us, I believe, financially. So our minimum manning, we have 14 man shifts right now and 11 man minimum manning. And that, that puts us really close. If anytime anybody's off sick or something like that, it usually costs overtime, so. I've talked with Owasso, they were in the same, exactly. I've talked with Owasso, they were in the same exact boat, and there's, they're, uh, they actually got six firefighters, and their overtime has gone down dramatically.
Wow.
Uh, they've added two per shift, where, where we would be talking about adding one, but it made a significant impact on their, on their overtime.
Commissioners, just a couple of other things, you know. Several years ago, we agreed, like Drew said, to eleven minimum manning on shift. Uh, then shortly thereafter, overtime numbers started to creep up, and an unintentional consequence of, of an action that we agreed to with the, um, with the fire union. A couple of years ago, we, we worked to try and curb some of that overtime by, um, allowing the first workers comp to be, and I'm not sure about this, Drew, you can, but we, we're working, we worked that year to try and curb overtime by limiting the number of firefighters that were off. Then last year, the, the IFF agreed to, uh, the trading time concessions as part of our contract with them. You know, we, we really need to, to continue to work toward curbing overtime. We've done it in police, working to try and do it in fire.
Sorry, I knew that was gonna happen.
Uh, to make an honest story short, we're, it's, it's, it's been a process, but we're, we're, we're trying to work through, uh, you know, curbing the overtime in the department and making sure that we have enough staff, uh, to be out there on shift all at the same time. So, um, it's been a little bit of a process, but over the years, we've, we've managed to work really well with the firefighters' union, and, and real pleased to be able to write this grant and hopefully get it.
Haven't we hired a lot of firefighters in the last two or three years?
Replacements, yes, ma'am, uh, for turnover, and, and, uh, we've, we've hired twelve in the last four, last four years. For us, that's a lot.
Do you feel like that's been relatively, I don't wanna say easy, but successful with applicants and being able to find, um, qualified-
We feel like we've had real good luck. It's taken, it's taken a lot of, a lot of work. We've put a lot into it in the last four years. Uh, we really have increased our, our screening process the last four years, but, uh, we feel like we've got really good candidates. Uh, these last twelve, we've had really good candidates. We're doing our, uh, our pre-entry physical tests and stuff with, in Choctaw, we're part of a consortium. Now, there's twenty-three fire departments that are part of the Eastern Oklahoma County VOTAC. We don't do our physical testing anymore. They, they do a CPAT test over there. We get our, most of our candidates from that.
Okay, good.
So, that, if there's any more questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, or, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that is it for administrative reports this evening.
Okay. Item number thirteen, commissioners' comments. I have one as it relates to the Traffic Commission. I think we had a conversation today about, um, the procedure for items being brought to the Traffic Commission, um, considered by the Traffic Commission, what's staff-driven, what's citizen-driven. We're gonna look at having some kind of guidelines for that?
Madam Mayor, I mean, that, what happened in, in the case of, uh, Mr. Barrett coming to the podium tonight is, uh, at the corner of Elm and Bradley Streets, uh, we had a stop sign. The Traffic Commission asked the staff to look at, uh, stop signs that may or may not be needed any longer in the city. So they did. There were three of them. One was at Minnesota and Federal, the other one was at the railroad tracks at Forty-Fifth Street, and the final one was, um, the stop sign there at Elm and Bradley. Um, I guess that it's been debated over probably the last five or ten years whether or not there needs to be a stop sign there. The Traffic Commission, um, heard it several years ago. The City Commission approved it. The Traffic Commission heard it again this time after staff brought it to them after they initiated the discussion and agreed to, to remove it. So, you know, I think, I think what we have here is a situation where we need to establish some policy as to how we handle these things in the future. Staff and myself have had some discussions about, um, tying it more to the, uh, uniform manual for traffic and, and traffic devices and design, and, and come back to the City Commission so that we can, we can set good policy for it, because right now, the way the process is set up is, uh, it was there, it was taken down, now we can make another request for it to come back up. So, you know, we need, we don't need to have that yo-yo effect going on where we, we confuse our citizens.
Well, the, the other part, too, I mean, we even had some items on our agenda tonight for, um, to approve from the Traffic Commission, and all we have are their recommendations. We don't have a staff report, we don't have improvement, we don't have anything except just-
The minutes.
Exactly what's there. The item, uh, recommend approval or deny it. I mean, that's basically it. So unless you attended the meeting-
Mm-hmm.
-you don't really understand the discussion and the, um, the needs or the wants of, uh, or for the purpose of, of what the item was that was even on there. So there's just, it's not like a planning commission agenda where, where we have staff reports, we have, um, we have their vote, we have, you know, a lot more information that comes to us.
In the case of the Traffic Commission, you know, they, they are supposed to be advisors to the City Commission as that goes. Uh, we can change that up as far as you guys get any more information, we'd be happy to do that.
I don't know, it's just one of those things that, when I went back and read the minutes, I mean, we approved it, too. We approved taking it out, but it was, it, it wa, we assumed that it came from a different purpose, I guess, and then-
Right.
-I went back and read the, the minutes of the Traffic Commission meeting for that, and I was like, oh, my goodness, how did that even get started?
Yeah, it was a little misleading the way that, that we showed that the staff was actually the one that initiated the request, and that's just something we need to change that we do for the future, so that you all know that that was from the Traffic Commission.
Okay. All right. Well, that was something I was curious about.
Look for changes, uh, coming about that, because City Engineer and I have talked about the fact that we can't continue to do this, otherwise we've got somebody that requests for the stop sign to come down, and I've got somebody that requests for the stop sign to go back up, so-
Yeah.
-we're gonna be looking for a way to improve that process.
What was the outcome of the other two locations?
They, they were, they were left in place. I think on the Forty-Fifth Street location, um, we only really have about one train a day out there, but, you know, removing that stop sign at this point probably isn't, isn't, uh, a good thing to do. Uh, we're also looking at, uh, maybe closing the Broad Street, Broadway Street location, so, um, the railroad administration likes us to mitigate those where we take one down and we put them up, so we may be making changes to that in the future as well.
Hmm. Okay.
There's no other warning in Forty-Fifth?
No, mm-hmm, no.
And part of the, the plan with this vote on Tuesday is a major expansion of Forty-Fifth, which I'm sure would-
Right.
-involve signalization of that crossing.
It could, it could, and if it's four lanes, it probably is gonna warrant it, but we'll have to study it when we get to that point.
I've been out there a lot of times on Forty-Fifth where they run it, and people run it bad, lots. I, I don't know why, I really don't, because it's like, they look and then they go on, but, but just, and that's with the stop sign.
You know, and in these instances, um, and I know that currently the chief has three cops officers, these are instances where we have speed problems, and we need to deal with the speeding problems in these locations as well, because that's really what we have, is people going too fast on these streets, and not stopping at stop signs.
But I am concerned with Mr. Barrett's situation. That, that scares me if they're doing sixty miles an hour in the third, I mean, that's, that's dangerous.
Well, there's no notice on Elm Street that that's gone away, and I about got smacked, uh, driving by there to look at it. I didn't even think about it. It was used to that being a three-way stop, and I just about got smacked pulling out in front of somebody. So, you know, either some kind of notice probably needs to happen from that standpoint.
Uh, in the, um, staff report for the week, it talked about Kickapoo Street, and, um, it seems like there was a, a date, uh, something was gonna happen this month, later on this month. Um, are we waiting for spring bid openings? Did we, I mean, did we get everything resolved, all of our parcels, our, um, the one that's not resolved, is it?
City Engineer can probably address some more level of detail, Mayor, but we did get a set of plans back yet, but there are still some, some things that we have found in there that are not quite right yet, so.
They sent them out for you to check?
Yeah, well, we got, uh, ODOT had hired EST to kind of redraw the, the plans and everything. We got them back just last Thursday, and we've started reviewing them, and we're redlining them, going through them this week, and we'll be getting them back with our comments to ODOT next week. Uh, just a quick review, though, of them. There's a lot of, not a lot, but I mean, there's quite a few instances where they haven't corrected the previous ones that we've redlined, so we've redlined them again. As far as the parcels, uh, uh, the city had filed condemnation, we put up the money for Pat's partner.
We have right of access, though. Okay.
We have right of access, but my concern, though, is we haven't got word back yet from ODOT Right-of-Way Division, uh, commenting on all the parcels and files and everything that we, that we've given them back last March, which is still under their review, so-
Okay.
Uh, depending on when they finalize that and get us back the comments about if our, if our files are lacking, or if we need additional paperwork, then there could be a couple more weeks of, of time to do that. But right now, they're telling me that, you know, they're still on a spring letting, whatever that means, but.
Okay. All right.
Spring away?
Spring letting.
Two thousand twelve.
Well, I hope so. It's, it's getting close, it's getting real close, it's getting close.
And did we ever get our, um, are we, are we finished with Shawnee Animal Hospital?
No. Hope to be seen. We have, we have one where money is still in court, has not been drawn down. We have one where money is owed to us, and we have one that the money has been paid in and drawn down, but drew trial amended by both parties. So, and then we have one that was settled with projects, uh, clearing property to be done, and that is still in progress, so.
Okay.
We have loose ends, but we, but we do have right of access.
Okay, okay. All right. Anything else?
Uh, I just want, for my clarification, we have right of access, but ODOT's not gonna be impressed with that as far as the project. We can start the project with, okay?
Because, because there is no argument of the, the property owners, the, the only property owner which we have not settled or had a judgment does not dispute the right to take it.
Okay.
So it's only, the only thing it issues is the amount, not the right to take.
Okay, so, so they can proceed?
Yes.
That an exception? It's that three foot of grass on Harrison that's causing the problem with that project, but we can proceed with the other, right? Okay.
Okay. Item number fifteen, consider an executive session to discuss city manager's evaluation pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven B one.
So moved.
All right. Motion to go into executive session by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Second. By Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye. That's five.
That's five, okay. Motion carries.
Do you want me, or do you want some time?
Yeah, where are we gonna get this?
I don't know where we're at.
We are back up here, and, um, basically we began discussion and then decided that we were not gonna continue without seven of us present.
Okay.
So, um-
Rather than go through it twice, uh, with all the commissioners?
I really wanted everybody in on-
So we give them one more opportunity.
Yeah. So.
I'm, I'm good with that. I had no idea that we weren't gonna have John or Ben here tonight, so.
But we didn't think about it.
We didn't, we didn't either.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we didn't either, so, um, and then we thought we could have the discussion with you, but that's, that's not right.
Or we just have to do it again?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll just set it up for the next meeting in February.
So do we need to have, um, a motion?
Um, I think you just say, no, obviously no action was taken. You broke off with that completing, without doing anything, so.
Without doing it, yes, we did not do that.
So no action was taken, and you can call the next item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. That would be item number eighteen, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. I'll give it to him. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The coffee was very good down there. Um, I'll open up the Shawnee Municipal Authority Meeting, February sixth, twenty-twelve. Um, we have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, new business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
I'm sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
So, okay.
Peterson.
Aye. That's gonna be tough to get a quorum on that one.
I have a throbbing headache.
Okay.
Do we need to call a UBS?
Yeah. I'll open up the Shawnee Airport Authority Meeting, February sixth, twenty-twelve. We have a quorum. Item number one, consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sims to approve.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, new business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Go second.
Vice Mayor Collier made the motion, and Commissioner Sims seconded it. Call roll, please.
Collier.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.